What's up, buddy? Still losing that one in there? Ha ha! You know I'm gonna get it.
Ladies and gentlemen, please take a seat so we can take a count. We have eight not voters in the hallway who need to find their way down to this section on my left hand side. Ladies and gentlemen, please ask the fellows to come forward and take a form form. In order to be counted, all voters must be seated. Please hold your card high to your head and not at shoulder or waist level. Please wait until the fellows have counted your row and acknowledged that they have finished counting your row and you have to keep your cards down. Please do not carry your cards in back if you need to use a paper outlet or have to remove the hat cover. It's not so easy to count. Ladies and gentlemen, please take a seat.
What do you think?
Section number one?
Section one thirty-eight, three-eight.
Section one thirty-eight. Section number two?
Forty.
Section two forty. Section number three?
He said thirty-eight.
Ninety-three, nine-three.
Section three ninety-three. Section number four?
Fifty, five-zero.
Section number four fifty. We have two-hundred-and-twenty-one voters in the hall. We have a quorum. I will now call the meeting to order. Just have to wait for the town clerk to return.
Do you want me to register a flight of my left? I think it was Larry.
Okay, we must be sure that the warrant has been properly served and I am going to have the clerk read the return of the constable who published the warrant. If I may have the clerk read the posting of the warrant and we will waive the reading of the warrant.
That's a way that nobody knows what it says.
Good evening. Commonwealth of Massachusetts Plymouth SS to either of the constables of the town of Wareham, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the legal voters of the town qualified to vote in town affairs to meet in the high school auditorium, seven Viking Drive, Wareham, Mass. on Monday, October twenty-fourth, 2011, to act on the following articles.
We will waive the reading of the warrant articles.
You are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting attested copies thereof on or before September sixteenth, 2011, in at least one public place in each precinct within the town, and by publishing a copy of the warrant by September twenty-second, 2011. Hereof fail not and make sure due return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk at the time and place of said meeting, given under our hands this thirteenth day of September in the year 2011, Wareham Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. I'm just gonna hold for just a few more seconds just to give these voters a chance to get in and check in, so we're just gonna wait just a very short minute. Ladies and gentlemen, if you could take your seats as quickly as possible so we may do the posting of the colors.
There was no need to hurry. You were right. Actually, it does. It really does. I'll talk to you about it. I went in very much, why are we doing this? And I came out saying, this is the right move.
While we're waiting for those to finish checking in, if you have any cell phones or electronics, please turn them off. I think we're almost there. Ladies and gentlemen, if I might make a suggestion at this point that we should try to remember that town meeting starts at seven o'clock. If we could come and be here by quarter of seven so that we can get checked in and start our time on time, it would be greatly appreciated, I think, by everyone. So, as a reminder for the spring meeting, or if we happen to go tomorrow night, just try to come a little earlier so that we can start promptly.
Clara, sorry, this is eating a Friday.
It was absolutely nice.
And my alma mater. So are you now officially a director?
And I think we're gonna host the Southeastern Mass Moderators here again in February.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen. I'm gonna ask for the posting of the colors by the Wareham High School Junior ROTC color guard. We will now have the salute to the flag by the junior troop eight oh one eight one. Please join them in the salute to the flag. To the flag. United States of America. Thank you. And now we will have the singing of the National Anthem by the members of the high school chorus. I would like to thank the chorus and the color guard and the brownies for joining us this evening and leading us in this wonderful opening. Thank you. I'd like to introduce, up on stage, we have our Board of Selectmen, our finance committee. On our finance committee, we have two new members since our spring meeting. We have Mr. Larry McDonald and Renee Pickett. Our town administrator, Mr. Mark Andrews. Our town council, Mr. Richard Bowen. And at this time, I just have two very short announcements. There were a couple inquiries. A couple of people thought that this was a continuation of the Board of Health meeting that was held last week. This is not. This is town meeting. The Board of Health will be meeting this Wednesday at their regularly scheduled meeting and will set a date and will post it and make it known as to when that meeting will commence. Just to let you know, I had the privilege of attending the Mass Moderators Association Annual Meeting on Friday at the College of the Holy Cross in Worcester. It was absolutely wonderful. There were a lot of sessions that I attended, one of which was electronic voting. There's still not, there were two towns that have had a trial run. There still are a lot of issues to be worked out, but it's an exciting adventure that hopefully, very soon, that we may be able to get to that point where we can take our votes electronically. It was very, very exciting to hear what's going on and hopefully, very soon, we'll be able to do that. I also had the privilege of being nominated and elected to the Board of Directors of the Mass Moderators Association. I feel very, very privileged for that. And we most likely will be hosting the Southeastern Mass Moderators here in Wareham again this year at the end of February, so that's exciting as well. I just have another few introductory comments for some rules that govern town meeting. The duties of the moderator and the government of town meeting, not specifically provided for by law, shall be determined by the rules of practice contained in Robert's Rules of Order seventy-fifth Anniversary Edition, Town Meeting Time, Town Meeting Tradition, and those rules set forth by the moderator. In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-nine, Section Fifteen, whenever a two-thirds vote is required by statute, such a vote may be declared as such by the moderator without a count and be recorded as such by the clerk upon such declaration, provided, however, that if seven or more voting members of town meeting doubt the vote, a count vote shall be taken. This is in accordance with Article Twelve of the October twenty-seventh, two thousand and three town meeting and was approved by the Attorney General on November twenty-first, two thousand and three. The warrant which was duly posted in every precinct and posted on the town website is the agenda for town meeting. Town meeting does not come to an end until all of the agenda items on the warrant have been decided, either by approval, by being defeated, or no action deliberately taken. The moderator will ask for a motion for each article, and voters should listen very carefully to the motion as stated, since the vote and the debate is on the motion, which may or may not be exactly as you have in your printed warrant. And to make it easier for you, the motions will be posted on the screen, so you'll be able to see them up there. I just want to reinforce to you that whatever debate that we get into, it's on the motion. One of the things that I have witnessed by attending other town meetings, we sometimes tend to stray in Wareham, and in other towns, they really stick to the motion before them and that does move town meeting along a little faster. Following the motion, the moderator will ask the proponent to speak, and then the moderator will ask the Board of Selectmen for the vote of the board, and then the vote and recommendation of the finance committee. There are a few articles tonight that we will have a report from capital planning as well. Voters should approach the two microphones on either side of the aisle and must be recognized by the moderator before speaking, and before speaking, please clearly state your name for the record. All comments are directed to town meeting through the moderator. Everyone, and I want to really reinforce this, must be civil and respectful to one another. There'll be no calling out, no applause, no rude behavior. No rude comments will be taken at this town meeting. Speakers should not be interrupted by others except when a voter raises a point of order. Any person who persists in disorderly conduct will be warned by the moderator and then asked to leave. The tradition of the Wareham Town Meeting has been to allow the presenter of an article five minutes to speak and two minutes for all others who wish to comment on the motion. Therefore, I would ask the body to move that this tradition be continued with the caveat that as moderator, I will not cut someone off in mid-sentence but give them the opportunity to finish with a warning that their two minutes is elapsing. Do I have a motion in favor? I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Passes. The moderator presides and regulates the meeting and decides all questions of order, makes a public declaration of the vote. The vote may be questioned by seven voting members. To offer an amendment, a voter needs to give the text to the town clerk in writing. This is so that the town clerk will have the exact motion as it's presented for the record. Amendments to amendments will not be allowed. Now reconsideration. A motion to reconsider enables a majority in an assembly to bring back for further consideration a motion that has already been voted on. The purpose of reconsidering a vote is to permit correction of hasty, ill-advised, or erroneous action, or to take into account added information or a changed situation that has developed since the taking of the vote. Based on town, prior town meeting tradition in Wareham, my policy on the motion for reconsideration is exactly that. In order to reconsider an article, it must be moved on the same day that the vote which it is to be considered was taken. It must be made by a member who voted on the prevailing side. It must be seconded, and it will only be permitted if there was a hasty, ill-advised, erroneous action, if there is additional information that was not previously available, or if there is a changed situation that developed since the taking of the vote. Photo policy. Broadcasting and recording town meeting falls within the scope of the moderator's power to regulate proceedings in his or her discretion, since the mass open meeting law does not apply to a town meeting. The moderator, keeping in mind that such recording is a privilege rather than a right, may at any time terminate recording in whole or in pot, or take such action to control the recording as circumstances warrant. I already have been advised to be prior to the meeting, we have members of the press that will be recording and taking photos, and they are aware of the further policy that there will be no photos taken during a vote. If for some reason we have to evacuate the hall due to an emergency, please exit calmly, quickly, but when you return, make sure you return only by this doorway, and that's to ensure the integrity of the meeting so that the clerk can make sure only those coming in have already been checked in and have their hands stamped. We do have the television crew in the back that may on occasion use the back door. We do have an officer at the back that will monitor it. They do have identification. There is no smoking on school property, and that means that you should not go out and sit in your car to have a smoke. If you want to go out and smoke, you absolutely need to sit in your car to have a smoke. If you want to go out and smoke, you absolutely need to leave the property. And again, please turn off your cell phones, and there is no food or drink allowed in the auditorium except for bottled water and maybe some hard candy. Article 2, Section 2.6 of the Town Charter states that all department heads shall attend the sessions of each town meeting for the purpose of providing the town meeting with information pertinent to warrant articles. If any such person is deterred by illness or other reasonable cause, he shall designate either a deputy or receive permission that they do not need to be here. I now will call for a roll call of the department heads. The accountant is not here due to illness. Administration is here. Animal Control. The assessor is not here due to a family medical issue. Board of Health. Chief of Police.
Here.
Collective Treasurer.
Here.
Community Development.
Here.
Conservation.
Here.
Council on Agent is excused due to illness. Emergency Medical Services.
Here.
Finance Committee is here. Harbor Master.
Here.
Inspection Services.
Here.
Library.
Here.
Municipal Maintenance.
Here.
Water Pollution Control Facility.
Here.
Planning.
Here.
Superintendent.
Here.
And we have the Selectmen and the town clerk present. Does the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen wish to address the body?
Not at this time. Thank you very much.
Does the Chairman of the Finance Committee wish to address the body?
Is it on?
It should be on. You might need to bring it right up to, close to you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. Madam Moderator, Assistant Moderator, distinguished members of the Board of Selectmen, ladies and gentlemen of Wareham, town employees and guests. Traditionally, the Fall Town Meeting warrant contains articles for the procurement of capital assets for the operations of the town. Capital expenditures are used to fund items for the infrastructure of the town, including acquisition, repair, and maintenance of major equipment, school buses, public safety vehicles, communication systems, MIS hardware and software, structural repair and maintenance of town-owned buildings, and the renovation or building of schools, but such is not the case with this warrant. The Massachusetts Department of Revenue recommends municipalities set aside three to five percent of their annual budgets for capital spending, in addition to any free cash that becomes available at year-end. There are towns in the Commonwealth that do this, but Wareham does not use this guideline. There is no policy guideline for the annual budget. Instead, we wait until the operations bills are paid and spend the bare minimum to keep the town functioning, using bonding, loans, and free cash. But there's a difference between frugality and conservative spending habits and ignoring critical issues. The articles in our current budget do not begin to address the real capital needs of the town that now total in excess of $90 million. This warrant addresses only $1 million with no plan as to how to move forward on an ever-growing list. The Capital Planning Committee started working in 2009 to identify the capital needs of the town, and after working extensively with the Town Administrator, municipal department heads, the superintendent of schools, and the school committee compiled a comprehensive five-year procurement list. That list continues to grow on a daily basis as our equipment and buildings continue to age and deteriorate. Our response has not met the need. We have done a minimal amount to address the deterioration of the schools and municipal buildings. In 2011, equipment capital needs were projected at $2.5 million, but were reduced to the $1.3 that has actually been expended. Identifying funding resources and getting the town to agree to spend the funds is a difficult challenge. The town needs an accelerated plan to identify, fund, and purchase capital items that have been neglected over a period of years. Since we don't know the actual amount of free cash currently available to the town, the Finance Committee has adopted a very conservative approach with regard to the financial items in this warrant. At some point in the very near future, we will need to review the feasibility of extensively borrowing to fund our capital needs. Interest rates are low at this time, but we are unable to take advantage due to our potential budget shortfall that falls beginning next year. We can figure the town's borrowing limits, but we must have a clear picture about its ability to repay any issued bonds before we take on any new debt. On personnel matters, we have a number of unresolved union contracts that have been in negotiation for months and even years. Based on an actuarial estimate rate of return on investments of eight and a half percent and annual payments until 2029, the town faces an unfunded pension obligation of approximately $20 million. The town also has an approximately $80 million unfunded obligation for other post-employment benefits. Any change in the actuarial estimates would severely impact revenues available for annual operations. To fund the annual fiscal year 2012 budget, the town relied on a reduction of the healthcare trust reserve totaling approximately $1.5 million. As we approach the next budget cycle, it will be necessary to find new sources of revenue to fund operations, possibly resulting in cuts to town services and more delay in addressing our infrastructure issues in the schools, the water pollution control facility, municipal buildings, and departmental equipment. It appears a reality that there is no further distance available to kick the can down the road. The time has come to make difficult decisions. As you read and hear the recommendations of your Finance Committee, please keep in mind that our charter-resigned duty is to advise town meeting of the merits of each article based on the facts available to us during our study and review. We've taken this responsibility seriously and have, in some instances, provided both the pro and con sides of an issue, recognizing there is no victory in a vote of the town meeting, only an informed consensus of the voters on a course of action.
Thank you. Does Capital Planning wish to make a report? Mr. Slaven?
Good evening, everybody. At spring town meeting, we presented our capital plan for 2012. That number was $1.8 million, but due to the accounting issues and needed information being unavailable, we said, come Fall Town Meeting, we would bring forth a fiscally sound and prudent plan. Note, we said "plan." The issues that were present in the spring are still present today. I'm going to stop at this one point here before I continue. There was supposed to be a handout called the Capital Planning Primer, which for some reason didn't get printed out. I would ask the Town Administration to take care of that for the next town meeting day tomorrow. It is up on the town website. This basically explains in good detail how a Capital Planning Committee works, what it's supposed to do, what its obligations are. It provides a complete overview of what is expected of capital planning and its interactions with the Town Administrator, per charter, bylaw, and Mass guidelines. I'd like to highlight several responsibilities you may not know. One, assess the town's financial capacity. Two, establish product priority. Three, develop a financial plan. Four, monitor approved projects. Five, included in the capital plans are utilities and roads. We have missed that so far, and we will be bringing that up also, because so far, in the $95 million we projected last year, does not include any roadwork. Our charter provides that capital improvement programs submitted by the Town Administrator shall be based on material prepared by the Capital Planning Committee per Section 2-5D of the Town Charter. I'll continue along now. Article 1 was actually submitted by the Board of Selectmen, through the Board of Selectmen, excuse me, by the Town Administrator. Most people think the Capital Planning Committee submits the articles. Charter requires that we basically make a listing, and the Town Administrator brings forth what happens. This year, Capital Planning Committee did not see the capital article until after the warrant was closed. Nor have we been informed of changes that we made today for Articles 1 and 3. The items in the Article 1 either were not in our five-year plan or did not follow our priority listing. This is unlike what happened in the two previous years. We did ask that some provision be made for an ambulance as a backup if the Town Administrator's plan for an ambulance did not materialize. Remember, we were still unable to develop a financial plan. We were running out of time and voted on our recommendations for each item in Article 1, plus Articles 10, 11, and 15. These articles had capital items included in the overall article. We finally met with John Foster, our Town Treasurer, on October 13. We needed his input in order to develop a financial plan for both 2012 and 2013. One of the questions was, should we institute new borrowing for capital items? Another one was, do we have the ability to pay back any new borrowings? His response was, capital items similar to these are typically purchased within the budget or through free cash. Borrowing was not a recommended choice until our financial picture is clear. The question of when capital leases would go onto our books and the possibility of having an unbalanced budget with the ramifications of not being able to set a tax rate was also discussed. During the meeting, the question was asked to both the Town Administrator and Mr. Foster about what funding we could expect for capital items over the next two years. The number was approximately $400,000 a year. Now, remember, the overall figure before was $95 million. Our plan for 2012 was $1.8 million. Our plan for 2013 is $2.6. Simple answer here, ladies and gentlemen, we obviously have a real problem. Matt, could you put up that piece? What you see before you is short and long-term solution, which is not a very pleasant thing to look at. I'll read it off. You can all read it with me if you want. It's an override of two and a half. Debt exclusion, reduced spending by cutting back on services or privatizing services. And number four, fund with available cash, only critical items, no borrowing. As for Article 1 that's on the warrant, the school buses, the ambulance that generated, are real needs that should go forward. The question is how we fund it. Thank you for giving us this time. The Capital Planning Committee wishes you all a happy and healthy holiday season. See you in April 2012.
Thank you, Mr. Slaven. I owe an apology to my Deputy Moderator. I did not acknowledge Joe when I introduced everyone. For that, I apologize. And onstage, we have my very capable and wonderful Deputy Moderator, Joe Ashley. Okay, consent agendas. As a matter of procedure, we can do some articles under consent agendas. Articles on a consent agenda are exceptions to the general process of town meeting. The moderator will identify those articles that should generate no controversy and can be properly voted without debate. These articles are generally standard articles that appear year to year. They're put on a consent agenda to allow their motions to be acted upon as one unit and passed without debate. The moderator would read out the number of the articles one by one. If one or more voters object to any article being included in the consent agenda, a voter should say "hold," and when that number is called, the article will be removed automatically from the consent agenda and restored to its original position in the warrant to be debated and voted upon in the usual manner. After calling out the individual articles in the consent agenda, the moderator will ask for a motion for the voters to pass all articles in the consent agenda as one unit on a vote. Use of a consent agenda makes the town meeting more efficient by speeding up the handling of non-controversial items and routine housekeeping matters. We have the potential to disperse with several articles this evening by a consent agenda. Articles number five, number seven, number eight, and number nine relate to collective bargaining. These articles were placed on the warrant as placeholders in case the union contracts were settled prior to town meeting. These contracts have not been settled, and all four articles will have a motion for indefinite postponement. Does anyone object to taking Articles 5? And Article 5 is the library employees' collective bargaining. Article 7, which is the police union. Article 8, Department Head Union. And Article 9, the steelworkers' union. And place them on a consent agenda. If not, I will accept a motion that Articles 5, 7, 8, and 9 be voted as a consent agenda and that they be indefinitely postponed.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Articles 12, 13, and 14 are community preservation, housekeeping articles that appear on the warrant each year as general housekeeping articles. These, too, can be taken as a consent agenda. These are routine matters to transfer funds from one of their accounts to another so that they can pay their bills during the ensuing year. Does anyone have any objection to Article 12, 13, or 14 being placed on a consent agenda?
Hold on Article 14, please.
Hold on Article 14.
Hold on Article 13.
I'm here.
Okay, well, in that case, we'll have to take them individually because we can't do just one. We have Articles 17 and Article 19. Article 17 is the Community Events Fund. This was an article that was before us in the spring. We voted on that article. We do not need to vote on this article again. Article 19 is an article that was submitted by the Housing Partnership Trust relating to housing, a housing initiative program, and was found to have some legal infirmities, and on the advice of Town Council, was suggested that it not be acted upon at this time. Does anyone have any objection to passing over Articles 17 and 19 in a consent agenda? Hearing no objection, I will accept a motion to pass over Articles 17 and 19.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, the rest of our articles per town meeting vote are done by lottery. Madam Clerk, if we may please have our first article?
Article 2.
May I have a motion by the FinCom? It's up on, if you don't have a copy, it's up on the screen. Article 2. Article 2 is before us by lottery.
Madam Moderator, I believe Article 2 was a petition article?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, okay.
No, it's not.
Madam Moderator, I move to withdraw the article.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, I believe, though, that Mr. Flaherty would like to speak to the article. Mr. Flaherty?
Yes, thank you. Mike Flaherty, Chairman of the Wareham Library Board of Trustees. Thank you for the opportunity to explain why we're withdrawing this article. The Board of Trustees are reluctantly withdrawing this article. After meeting with the Board of Selectmen, the Town Administrator, Capital Planning, the Finance Committee, Municipal Maintenance, we learned a lot. We learned that just about everyone seems in agreement that the library is in need of many costly repairs. In fact, when we pled our case, it seemed everyone just kept nodding their heads and practically finishing each other's sentences. However, everyone's also in agreement that Article 2 did not follow the capital planning process, and it needs to. Some folks have insisted that we move forward regardless. After all, some of the repairs have actually been on the capital planning, on the capital plan for two and a half years now. plan for two and a half years now. But we decided to just stick with the capital planning process and work in good faith to get that done.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty. Anything further to be said? Hearing nothing, we have a motion before us to move to withdraw Article Two. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. May I have a motion, please, from Community Preservation?
Sandy Slaven, Community Preservation. I move that the town vote to appropriate from the Community Preservation--
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Try better. I move that the town vote to appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund FY 2012 estimated annual revenue under open space, the sum of $7,423 for payment for a debt service on the property known as Bryant Farm. And further to appropriate under historic preservation, the sum of $104,128 for payment of a debt service on property notice Tremont Nail. Both voted for purchase from Community Preservation Funds by town meeting in April 2004.
Do I have a second?
Yeah.
To speak to the Article?
This is a debt payment that we must make every year. The debt was part of a program that was done for a twenty-year debt, and this will continue until 2023.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Madam Moderator, the Board of Selectmen voted favorable action. Two in favor, two against.
I think you have to take the mic right up to you, very close.
Madam Moderator, the Board of Selectmen voted favorable action. Two in favor, two against.
Thank you. May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee also voted favorable action seven zero zero.
Thank you. Anything to be said to the question on my left?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Margaret Ishuhara, Precinct Three. I really just have a question. Since we, for the next thirteen years or so, are going to be paying this $104,128 for Tremont, the Tremont Nail building, I'm just wondering what the status is of the building or the renovations, or what plan we might have in mind for this property.
Someone wishes to answer the question?
I believe we have a contract that has accepted our contract to have three of the building's roofs done. And that's what we're doing now, is preserving three of the buildings.
Thank you. Anything further to be said? On my right?
Alan Slaven, Thirty-Sixth Oak Street. To continue that, we've been working on a bus tour, and we've also been working on a walking tour of Wareham. The University of Massachusetts History Department is helping us, and we're hoping to have a program come this spring to see what we can do with the property and make a valuation on whether or not we can further develop this into some kind of a permanent piece so we can help actually make the property developable. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further to be said? Seeing no one standing, I will now call for a vote. It requires a majority vote. I will try for unanimous. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Passes by a majority vote. May I have a motion?
Sandy Slaven, I move that the town vote to transfer from a Community Preservation Fund 2012 estimated annual revenues, sums of money to the Community Preservation Fund reserves for future appropriation as follows. Seven hundred and two, seven, seventy thousand two hundred for affordable housing reserve, five thousand one hundred for administration, and two thousand four hundred and one hundred forty-nine dollars for FY 2012 budgeted reserve.
Thank you. May I have a second? Hearing a second. To speak to the Article?
This is a requirement transfer. We must put aside a minimum of ten percent in each one of our three reserves. The open space, historical preservation have already had ten percent spent, but we had not had any Article for affordable housing, so the seven thousand, seventy thousand is our ten percent set aside, and the five thousand one hundred is the balance needed for the five percent set aside for administration.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Madam Moderator, the vote of the Board of Selectmen was favorable action three, four, and one against.
Thank you. May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee voted favorable action seven zero zero. The Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this Article. This is a housekeeping Article. The Finance Committee and the Community Preservation Committee reviewed the estimated revenues and expenditures for FY 2012 and determined that funds upon receipt are available for transfer as requested.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on Article Twelve? If not, I will call for the vote. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
It passes by a majority vote. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Moderator, I move to transfer the sum of $160,000 from the Water Pollution Control Facility Fund balance reserved for debt account to the Water Pollution Control Facility expenses account.
Ms. McDonald, I think that motion up on the screen is a little different.
It's a different account. Well, this is the one we're reading from, so.
It's the retained earnings account.
That's where it's.
If you want to just read it from the screen.
Oh, that'd be great. I move to transfer the sum of $160,000 from the Water Pollution Control Facility retained earnings to the Water Pollution Control Facility expenses account to fund items and the, items A and B as printed in the warrant.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have heard from D O R. on this, and that is the correct account, the retained earnings account is where it needs to be taken from. Do you speak to the Article?
Madam Moderator, Guy Campina, Director of Water Pollution Control. I request the transfer of the administration for the repair of the ventilation system and our pump stations. It becomes a safety issue. I don't know if you saw the videos or the pictures earlier, but it speaks to the safety of the workers in the, in the wet wells that are twenty or thirty feet below the surface. It also speaks to the ventilation for running equipment. The generators won't run without proper ventilation. We found that out on the Tropical Strom Irene. And it talks to the safety of the workers down below grade and the air quality that they're breathing. It also speaks to the degradation of the metal, so we need to add ventilation, exchange the air of the gases, as an example, hydrogen sulfide. And we're also speaking of the humidifying systems that remove moisture, as the pictures, can you move that to see? You can see that we have deterioration on the control panels, electrical control panels. They're very unsafe, as you'll see. Also, I'm asking to transfer some funds to buy a, another boom truck or crane truck, if you will. We have one that is old. It was, I believe it was purchased during the Riverside contract for the smaller pumps. We now have larger pumps, and it's very difficult to pick those up. It's become very unsafe, and I would like to correct it before it becomes a problem. The crane truck that we have now, we'll put it, keep it in service, and we'll use it as an emergency vehicle, which is on the capital plan list. So it'll actually replace a vehicle we have that we need to replace anyways with the vehicle that we're presently using. And this vehicle here, which we'll buy by state bid, will replace the one we have. It has a bigger boom to lift the bigger pumps. And that's all I have.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Madam Moderator, the Board of Selectmen voted favorable action three, four, and one against.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee voted favorable action seven zero zero. The Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this Article. This Article requests funds to pay for electrical panels and HVAC upgrades that are required to bring the system to standard and provide safety upgrades where needed. The purchase of the boom truck represents the resolution of a safety factor for the water pollution control facility employees. The current truck is not considered strong enough to prevent potential personal injury accidents. Approval of this Article means money should come from the water pollution control facility retained earnings.
Thank you. I believe we need a report from capital planning.
The Water Pollution Control Facility capital improvement, our committee voted in favor of both items. Both items were in our plan. We were in favor as long as the enterprise funds would be used to pay for them. We understand that the motion, as you see here, is different than the warrant article, which is no problem since it's been changed, and we were prepared to change the motion, so therefore, we are in approval.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on Article Ten? Gentlemen to my right.
Bruce Savageo for the record, Precinct One. I just had a question. What is the balance of our retained earnings account currently, Water Pollution Control?
Any other questions? I believe the question was, what is the balance in the retained earnings account? If there is anyone that's able to answer the question?
Madam Moderator, through you to the body. Two million, seven hundred and seventeen thousand, fourteen dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Thank you. Anything further to be said on my left?
Thank you, Lynn Burrows, Eight Seventeenth, Wareham. I just have a question in regard to the ventilation and stuff like that. I know that people up in, that, the people who live around the area of this have been having ventilation problems, too, and their yards have stank since this went in. And I was told there was an issue with the cover of something outside. I'm wondering if any of these repairs will give the people in that area any relief?
To answer the question?
I must apologize. I was talking, so I wasn't paying attention. I believe the question pertaining to covers, sewer covers, so if you could restate, I'll definitely answer the question.
Would you like to repeat your question, Ms. Burrows?
People who are living in the area of the sewer plant for years have had awful stenches turning on the air conditioner as it comes through the house. It's their way of life, and they can't sell the homes. My question is, are any, is any of this money that we're spending gonna bring any relief to the people in the area?
The particular money we're spending is for the ventilation systems. To answer your question directly, no. The money we're spending now is bringing relief. We're cleaning the stations. And again, to get them in the stations and down below to make these repairs and to clean, we will get the ventilation running so we can put them on there for extended period of time to make the improvements that we necessary. That will definitely help alleviate your problem in that neighborhood.
Thank you. Anything further to be said on Article Ten? If not, the vote will now come on Article Ten. Requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes by a majority. May I have a motion?
I move that the town vote to amend its current earth removal bylaw as contained in the town's general bylaws, so that the existing bylaw is replaced with the bylaw as printed in the
Does everyone have a handout? To speak to the Article, Mr. Pesavich?
Good evening. My name is Eddie Pesavich, Precinct One. The amendments to the current earth removal bylaw are based on the Massachusetts General Law's Chapter Forty, Section Twenty-One, Item Seventeen. And these amendments will accomplish clearly defining the earth, the meaning of earth removal, protecting our drinking water by prohibiting earth removal activities in Zone Two as identified on the town of Wareham zoning map. Can we get any bigger than that, Matt? That's it. Okay. The Zone Two, if you look at the upper right-hand corner, it's outlined in diagonal lines with a green border line going around it. It's in that upper right-hand section. We currently have a sole source aquifer, which means that more than fifty percent of our water comes from this aquifer, and there's no readily available other sites for water. The towns that get their water from this aquifer are Bourne, Carver, Kingston, Middleborough, Plymouth, Plimpton, and Wareham. Zone Two is the recharge area for the Plymouth-Carver aquifer. Zone Two has been scientifically identified as the area in which rain passes through the ground and enters the aquifer. The sand in this area filters the rainwater before it enters the aquifer, removing many of the pollutants. Earth removal activities in Zone Two could adversely affect the purity of our drinking water. Currently, there is only one active earth removal permit in Wareham. Earth removal activities will be limited to the area ten feet above the seasonal high water table. Currently, the regulations allow earth removal activities to within four feet of the high water table. The additional six feet of separation will protect the groundwater from the pollutants. This ten-foot limit was taken from the bylaws currently in effect in Kingston. It treats all property owners equally by clearly defining the agricultural exemption, which has been abused in the past. This particular bylaw specifically identifies what the agricultural exemption is and specifically states that if earth is being removed for sale, it is not part of the agricultural activities. This particular section was taken from the Carver bylaws. Eliminates the loophole that currently exists in the earth removal bylaw, which has cost the town in excess of $100,000 in fees in the last couple of years. Things are tight, but through this loophole, we're losing a ton of money, over $100,000. The Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection developed a model Zone Two conservation restriction for public drinking water supply protection. Under prohibited activities and uses, Item Three reads, "No soil, loom, peat, gravel, sand, rock, landfill, or other mineral substances of natural deposit shall be excavated or removed from the premises." This entire, these amendments have been vetted through Town Council, and they have been okayed. And in summation, these amendments will protect even more our water supply, and they're gonna make us money. As I stated previously, we've lost over $100,000 in fees. This will close that loophole and allow the town to collect the proper fees for earth removal. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Madam Moderator, the Board of Selectmen did not vote on this Article.
Thank you. May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee voted zero in favor, six against, and zero abstained. The increased restrictions proposed by the Clean Water Committee are not supported by any scientific-- by any scientific studies. That Zone Two is compromised and offices, they offer no proof there are issues with earth removal and the aquifer in this area. The Wareham Board of Water Commissioners, through correspondence, stated the existing regulations are sufficient to accomplish the desired net effect of its intended purpose. The Town of Wareham has one of the most comprehensive zoning bylaws relating to groundwater protection in Massachusetts. Approval of this bylaw changes could prohibit a property owner from having a business and taking away gravel from the owner's site, and could potentially put three individuals that currently operate out of Zone Two out of business. This could result in costly litigation for the town.
Can you speak into the mic?
This article could result in costly litigation for the town, and I urge you all to, to vote this down.
Sir, anything to be said to the article, gentlemen on my right?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Moderator. Bruce Savageo for the Record, Precinct One. Well, um, I'm sorry. Well, if there's no, uh, if there's no scientific data or empirical data to support this, then I'm perplexed as to why, uh, the state actually has the legislation that this actually adopts. That's all this does. It adopts current law. The law is there for a reason. Our bylaws are not so comprehensive at all, uh, when it comes to earth removal. And I'm very surprised to hear that there are three businesses operating in this community without a permit, because that's what this does. It gives the Board of Selectmen, as the permitting authority, that legal tool to use in regulating an unregulated business right now. Uh, yes, there is one. There used to be two, and, uh, when, when I sat on the board, the biggest problem the Board of Selectmen had with respect to this was the fact that we didn't have anything that we could rely on legally to, uh, protect this community, which is what this is all about. We sit on top of our own water supply. You know, other communities are not so privileged. They have to pump their water in. We sit on top of it. We have a greater responsibility to ourselves and our community and our own environment. And that's all this does. So I urge you to support the article.
Thank you. On my right?
Thank you. Brenda Exstrom, Precinct Two. I would also urge, um, favorable action on this. While the, um, Finance Committee read a letter from the Wareham Water Commissioners, as a member of the onset water commissioners, we voted unanimously to support this. Um, the recharge area that is being spoken about is in the, um, area where the onset water comes from. That's the area. And, and we felt very strongly that we should support this and protect our water resources, uh, by any means possible. Thank you.
Thank you. On my right?
Thank, thank you. Mike Flaherty, Precinct One. Uh, I have more of a point of order or just a question. I notice here under, um, uh, where it says the Board of Selectmen voted and the Finance Committee voted, the Selectmen said they didn't vote at all, and the Finance Committee said they voted, um, favorable, uh, reading directly from here, they voted favorable action zero, six, zero, but the recommendation was that the Finance Committee only includes recommendations on financial articles in its printed recommendation report. But I just heard a recommendation against it, and I just wanna know, why wasn't that in here?
Would the Finance Committee like to speak to the question?
Yes, the Town Charter requires that we, in the warrant, all right, our printed version, we have to address any article that is financial in nature in writing. All right? We feel also, though, that we're charged with reviewing all articles. And as such, we feel not bringing to the town meeting what we, you know, went back and did the study on, what we heard information in regards to the article, et cetera, on, all right, uh, would not be of service, good service to the town meeting. So although we cannot write by charter a recommendation, we can surely state it as advice to the town meeting.
Uh, through you, Madam Moderator. So this, this, what was just discussed by, was just said by Mrs. Brock, that was a position of the FinCom, correct?
Correct.
And what was the vote?
It was zero, six, zero, unfavorable action, which means we are opposed. We do not recommend it.
I, I'm sorry if I'm getting a little confused. I'm just-
The, the vote, Mr. Flaherty, was zero in favor, six opposed. In other words, the motion is for favorable action. The vote of zero means nobody was in favor of it. The six means that six of them were opposed to it.
Thank you. I, I, I get it now. I know what you're saying.
Thank you. Gentleman on my left?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. John Deekus, District Three. Um, probably the one industry in this community that would be most affected by these bylaws would be the cranberry industry, which has an awful lot of earth removal for a variety of cultural practice reasons.
Can you speak a little closer into the mic, please? Thank you.
What I said was that the industry of this community that is most affected by these bylaws would be the cranberry industry. And while this is a long, complicated amendment, I'm not gonna go through it piece by piece, but I do think there are a couple of things that are worth noting that I would like to point out at this time. Um, it would seem to me a responsible approach by the Clean Water Committee, uh, or by the bylaw, this bylaw committee, to at least communicate with the cranberry industry on the effect that these bylaws would have on our industry and how these bylaws might have unintended consequences as it relates to the quality of, of our water. Um, back in, in two thousand and eight, the cranberry industry wrote a letter to the Board of Selectmen, asking that they have a seat on the Clean Water Committee, that they be part of any conversation that takes place as it relates to these kinds of bylaws, so that they could provide, uh, the kind of assistance that would be required in finding a reasonable solution to whatever the problem might be at any given time. This is the approach they've taken in the Town of Carver and other communities where there are a lot of cranberry bogs. They've done it very successfully, where they see, where they sit on these committees and they work and find a compromise-
Thirty seconds.
I'm sorry?
Thirty seconds.
Uh, well, I'm gonna need about two more minutes, Madam Moderator.
Would you like to ask, ask the body for additional time?
Yes, I would. I appreciate that.
Uh, that would require a vote of the body. Mr. Deekus is requesting approximately two more minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Passes. Mr. Deekus, you will have an additional two minutes.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll try to shorten it up. Um, as indicated by a member of the Finance Committee, there, there, the prohibition of digging within ten feet of a water table is not based on, on any source, uh, or any scientific source whatsoever. Uh, I don't know whose idea that was, but it, it, it doesn't apply in this particular case. And I would, and, and when the Selectmen, uh, did not even, uh, give the cranberry industry through the Cranberry Growers Association the courtesy of a response on that request to be part of the conversation, I think that tells you what was going on in two thousand and eight. And unfortunately, to this day, the cranberry industry does not have a voice in these kind of things, and it's required. And it's the best way to prepare for a town meeting, the best way to prepare a complete understanding of the ramifications of these kind of bylaws. Let me give you one quick example of what I'm talking about. I am a member of the Buzzers Bay Coalition, uh, Consensus Committee. That's a committee that's been put together of citizens of the Town of Wareham. It includes people from the Clean Water Committee, it includes people from our industry, to sit down and make recommendations to this town on how to reduce, how to improve water quality, and how to preserve, and how to protect our environment by reducing the, uh, the release of nitrogen into the environment and into Buzzers Bay. Uh, one of the things that are coming out of that committee-
Madam Moderator, point of order, please. Relevancy to the specific article, the stuff we've now-
Thank you, Mr. Pesavich. I believe it is relevant. He's talking about, uh, clean water?
Here's the point, Madam Moderator. Thank you. There are two things that, and, and Mr. Pesavich is a, a member of that committee along with, with myself. It recommends two things: bypass canals and cranberry bogs and tailwater recovery systems. What is a tailwater recovery system? That is, it gives the cranberry grower an ability to develop a system and a tailwater recovery pond that can allow it to keep its water on-site without releasing it unnecessarily when, uh, when necessary. It keeps the flow of that water, agricultural water, from going downstream when it's appropriate to do so. The other thing is a bypass canal, a bypass canal allows a cranberry grower to dig a canal that circumvents a stream that releases water through a cranberry bog-
Twenty seconds.
So that when a cranberry bog grower uses fertilizer or pesticides, he can hold it back. Uh, he, it does not go through that bog. It does not release. It does not go downstream. It does not go down into the bay. If you pass this, uh, this amendment, as it is written, those two very useful, um, um, opportunities will, will be circumvented, will not be allowed, will not be, will be outlawed in the Town of Wareham.
Time, Mr. Deekus.
That would be the only cranberry town in, in Massachusetts that, that would restrict such, such a, uh, environmental beneficial, um, opportunity. So I would urge everybody in here to vote against this. Send it back to that committee. Get some cranberry people to sit down with them.
Mr. Deekus, I'd like you to finish your sentence. Your time.
And we will work with them and we'll come forward with a-
Your time, Mr. Deekus.
-more reasonable approach. Thank you.
Gentleman on my right. I just have one request. If we could try to keep only two people to each microphone so that we're not blocking the aisle, um, both for safety reasons and, um, courtesy to those behind you, it would be appreciated. On my right?
Uh, Brock Tucci. I own and operate Maple Park Campground and Cranberry Bogs. Uh, I've been told by many department heads that this, um, department members of the town, that this has my name on it. They just-
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
I've been told by many members of the town government, since this came out, that this has my name on it. If you look at it close enough, this is put in here to get me.
Mr. Tucci, just stick to the merits of the article, please.
This is the merit of the article, I believe. If the people in the boards feel that this is just put in to stop me from hauling sand, it's a grave mistake. This started in two thousand and seven. The same sand problem, it's put me in bankruptcy. Plain and simple. And it's, and illegally. I haven't sued anybody. I'm trying to work my way through it. So, this going for, Madam Moderator, I'm being heckled. This will finish me off. And, you know, maybe it'll be a blessing in disguise for me. There's nothing here. I pump my water from the same aquifer. I supply two thousand people every day in the summer. I test the water. I've been testing it for forty years. It hasn't been hurt yet. It's not gonna be hurt in the future. Madam Moderator, I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Tucci?
I haven't shut up since I started talking.
Uh, ladies and gentlemen, we have a gentleman at the microphone. I would greatly appreciate, and so wouldn't he, to keep comments under wrap until there is no one at the microphone. Uh, it is very rude, and I am gonna ask that it cease. I apologize, Mr. Tucci, for the voters that did that to you. My apologies to you on behalf of those in this hall. Please continue.
Thank you. As I said, I've been, I pump this. I pump two million gallons of water a year from the groundwater that sits above that aquifer. I test it monthly. I have my test reports for the Board of Health hearings. I'm certainly not gonna do anything to damage the water that I supply to these tourists that come to town. And I, I mean, I, I stressed for days what to say here.
Twenty seconds.
And, uh, I guess the best thing is to say, it's a big mistake. I mean, I'm not threatening a lawsuit or anything like that, but it's certainly gonna bring them from someplace. So I'm gonna ask you to vote against it. Not just vote against it, but resolutely, 'cause it just keeps coming back and coming back. It seems pointless to be in business in a town.
Nine seconds.
We've been here for fifty-one years in this business. Family's owned the land since eighteen sixty-nine. And it's really tough to get out of bed in the morning, wondering who's coming from where and why. Thank you.
Time. Thank you. On my left?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Moderator. Bill Heaney, Precinct One. Um, I have a question to the Board of Selectmen, and that is, uh, I understand the Board of Selectmen did not vote on the article. Was there a reason for that?
To answer the question?
Oh, Madam Moderator, I can only speak for one. I was rushed to the hospital that day, so I wasn't part of the discussion.
Okay, so you're excused.
Thank you very much, Bill. I did it here last year, remember?
Does anyone else on the board wish to respond?
Madam Moderator, we did not vote on this article because it was still, uh, being reviewed for some changes there, uh, by Town Council, which is the difference between the article you have in your warrant and the article in the handout.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, my, my concern about this is, uh, basically, the, the town is not responsible for the, uh, water supply, uh, for the drinking water supply, and that's the responsibility of either the onset water district or the Wareham Water District. And so if the town takes on the responsibility of, uh, a bylaw which, uh, is intended to protect the water supply, uh, I'm concerned that that now makes the town liable if the water supply, if something were to happen to the water supply. Uh, and, and it's, it's for that reason that I'm, that I'm very concerned about inserting ourselves where, where maybe we don't belong, uh, from a liability perspective. And, and I think that, uh, this is not something, uh, that the town should consider at all. If, uh, the town, uh, is that concerned about it, it should work with the water district and, and develop, uh, a position of the water district to, uh, actually require, uh, some curtailment. Um, but I, I'm really concerned over the liability of the thing. And for that reason, I'll vote no, and I'll urge the body to vote no as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pesavich, I, I recognize that you've been standing. You had four minutes. You do have a minute left, but I will, uh, reserve the right to call you after everyone else has had a, a chance to speak.
Fine, thank you.
Mr. Schneider?
Madam Moderator, through you to the body. Um, I rise in, in support of this article, and I'd like to just explain a little bit that, um, although the previous speaker said that the Board of Selectmen, uh, that this wasn't their responsibility, clean water wasn't their responsibility, we are the responsible board that issues these, um, the earth removal, um, permits. Excuse me, I'm, I'm fighting a little cold here. Um, and I'd like to also address the issue of the-
Sir, can you speak up?
I'd also like to address the issue of the-
Just let me throw this caution out to everyone as you stand to speak. Please bring the microphone as close to you as possibly, um, and I think it will articulate through the mic better. Thank you.
I'd also like to address the issue, um, related to the cranberry bogs. This article is not, um, does not address cranberry bogs. The art, the definition for earth removal is stripping, digging, or excavating earth from any lot not in public use, and removing or carrying the earth away from said lot. That's carrying earth that is filtering the water that goes into our aquifer. This isn't about cranberry bogs. It's absolutely about creating clean water, protecting our aquifer. The Board of Selectmen are in charge of issuing the earth removal permits. This gives us some teeth to actually enforce the permits. Um, I know that there are at least three permits issued out there now. This, this article isn't directed at any, any individuals, and I would urge you to support this article.
Thank you. Mr. McDonald?
I have to figure out how to run the mic first, so. Uh, Madam Moderator, through you to either the proponent or Town Council. I believe in here it's showing this is a general bylaw change, and I was curious if it's going to conflict. I believe there's a specific zoning bylaw that it may conflict with.
Would council care to?
What was the conflict?
What's the conflict, Mr. McDonald?
Uh, I believe in the, the zoning bylaw, it states it at four feet, and this is a general bylaw which will bring it out to ten feet, so that actually conflicts with a zoning bylaw. I believe it's forty-four. He's, he knows which one I'm talking about.
He understands the question and will respond.
Thank you.
Attorney Bowen?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, and-
Thank you, Madam Moderator, and thank you, Mr. McDonald, for explaining to me. It wouldn't be a conflict. When you have a situation where you have two regulations that regulate the same activity, although one may apply a less restrictive standard than the other, ultimately, it's the one that has the more restrictive standard that's going to supply what's required. So if you had an overlap between zoning and a permit issued under this particular bylaw, the 10-foot would apply.
Mrs. Brunt?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I know that we've heard tonight that this isn't particularly targeted at individuals. Ladies and gentlemen, this is going to hurt our cranberry growers. It's going to hurt our people. As Mr. Tousie said, I've never met Mr. Tousie before in my life.
Please leave names out and just refer to someone as prior speaker. Thank you.
This is definitely targeted at people. Wareham's not about this, ladies and gentlemen. To do this would be wrong. It would be just so wrong to do this to people, to take their living away from them. And I urge you to think with your head, and do the right thing here, ladies and gentlemen. Don't pass this bylaw.
Gentlemen, actually, I think Mr. Brusa was ahead of you. Do you wish to...
He asked if I could... I asked him if I could go in front for just one point. He agreed.
On my right?
I'm going to disagree with Town Council. My understanding is through some of the courses I've taken, I'm not a lawyer, but basically...
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
I'm going to disagree with Town Council. Zoning bylaw in Land Court holds precedent over general bylaws.
Thank you. Okay, gentleman on my right?
James Maxim, 83 Maple Swings Road. My question is to the board, has anybody done any scientific studies as far as what the earth removal projects are in the town of Wareham and what the consequences are for them? Anybody can answer that? If somebody's done a study.
To answer the question only, Mr. Pesavich?
Can you answer the question through you, Madam Moderator?
To answer the question only.
There's currently one active earth removal permitted activity in the town of Wareham. All the other permits have either lapsed or are no longer in effect, and the one permit that's left is Graziano Company.
My question, that didn't really answer my question. My question was, is did the board do any scientific studies that states this is detrimental to our water supply if somebody does earth removal on their property? Is there anybody that... Like I say, I mean, if we haven't done the studies, then why are we voting on something that we don't know about? That's my question.
Apparently, no one's to answer your question, but we've heard your question and your concern.
Okey-dokey.
Gentlemen on my right?
Madam Moderator, Bob Brusa, Precinct Two. I would like to move the question on Article 18.
I'm not going to take your motion, Mr. Brusa. We did have two more people, and I think we'll take those two. They've been standing for a while. On my left?
I'm in favor of this article. I've heard things, Lynn Barrows, I've heard things like, you know, the Water District should handle it because the town could be liable if they handle it themselves. I would think if we knowingly allowed problems that existed with our water to continue, that we'd be subject to liability as far as that goes. And to say that the residents of both Onset and Wareham collectively together are not responsible for the water that they drink and the water that they're passing along to other communities, I think is just not right. We heard about businesses going out of business, and, you know, there's different types of businesses in town. There's different types of ways to tax the businesses based on what's going on at the location of the business. And if your business is agricultural, however, is involved in retail distribution of soil and those kinds of materials, then as a former speaker said, you know, he's been paying taxes on it, well, that's why. And I can say that, and this wasn't any plan, I had no idea about this on the agenda.
Twenty seconds.
But I drove through down near the aquifer where there's a campground business, and that was for my family to go camping. And as I was driving through it, it was beautiful, but I came to this point where, for going up 30 to 50...
Time.
Can I finish my sentence?
You may finish your sentence.
30 to 50 feet on the embankments, there's hundreds of yards of soil that's just disappeared, very rich soil. So I would urge you to vote in favor of this because our water should come before anything.
Thank you. On my right, Mr. Paulson?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I also, as Mr. DeCus and also Eddie Pesavich, sit on the Buzzards Bay Coalition Clean Water Subcommittee. So I have not only an interest, but I have some background in this as do the other gentlemen and the other people here. I'd make two observations, one of which bears directly on the statement that Selectmen Schneider made, but is also reflective of a statement that Mr. Pesavich made at our INCOM meeting. He was asked by one of my colleagues whether anybody would lose their business because of this. And his response was, yes, there might be one. There might be one. That's in testimony before us, or was. That gave me pause, as it should give us all pause. I then asked him a question of my own, and then repeated the question some time later. I asked him if there was any immediate danger to the aquifer. And his response was, no. I asked him if there's any reason to believe that there's any growing problem. And his answer again was, no. And as I said, I repeated the question, and I got the same two answers. My conclusion, backed up by my colleagues on the Finance Committee, was that we should not be going forward with this. We all have different reasons for voting against it.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. But I would urge you to vote against this. Thank you very much.
Mr. Pesavich, you have one minute.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Eddie Pesavich, Precinct One. Clarifications. Clean Water Committee does have an active cranberry grower onboard. Number two, this bylaw amendment only deals with earth removal, has nothing to do with cranberry growers. They're totally exempt from this bylaw as well as anybody else building. If you read it, you'll see it. Number three, the agricultural exemption that we have in this bylaw came word for word from the town of Kava. I underscored Kava, okay? The only difference between our amendment and theirs is they have an Earth Removal Committee. We have the BOS that puts it in effect. I would disagree, I agree partially with Mr. Paul's, I'm sorry, with the previous speaker.
Twenty seconds.
There is obviously a potential. We're sitting there with a loaded gun in our head. If you take away the sand that's filtering the water that's going into the aquifer, eventually somebody's going to put a hole and get into the water table, and that polluted water's going to go directly into our drinking water.
Time.
Thank you.
On my right?
Madam Moderator, once again, Bob Brusa, Precinct Two. I'd move the question on Article 18.
Thank you. We have a motion before us to move the question. You have a second? Requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
We have a two-thirds vote, I so declare. The vote will now come on Article 18. The motion before you is to move that the town vote to amend its current earth removal bylaw as contained in the town's general bylaws so that the existing bylaw is replaced with the bylaw as printed in the handout. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
This motion fails. I need seven members. I see seven members questioning the count. Tellers, would you please come forward and take a hand count? All those in favor, please raise your cards and hold them high till the tellers have counted. We're in the middle of a count.
Excuse me, they're asking what exactly they're voting on, please?
We are voting, all those in favor, of Article 18, to move that the town vote to amend its current earth removal bylaw. The motion before you is, all those in favor, to move that the town vote to amend its current earth removal bylaw and replace it by the language in your handout. All those in favor, please say aye. Please raise your cards.
Section one six.
Section one six. Section two?
Nineteen.
Section two nineteen. Section three?
Eighteen.
Section three eighteen. Section four?
Ten, one zero.
Section ten four. All those opposed to amending the current bylaw?
Section one thirty-two, three-two.
Section one thirty-two. Section two? Section two twenty-six. Section three?
Ninety-nine.
Section three ninety-nine. Section four?
Fifty-one, five-one.
We have fifty-three in favor and 208 opposed. The article fails by a majority. Article eleven.
Madam Moderator, I move to transfer $79,000 from the Harbor Service Permit Reserve for Appropriations Account to the Harbor Master Maintenance and Improvement Account.
Do I have a second?
Second.
To speak to the article?
Madam Moderator, I'm going to ask the Harbor Master to speak for this measure. Mr. Buckminster?
Good evening, Gary Buckminster, Harbor Master. My article is broken down to various steps. One of them is to acquire an updated vehicle for our department. We use this vehicle for 24-hour response, seven days a week. We tow trailers, we haul equipment. It'll come with a winch, emergency lighting, police radios, VHF radios to monitor boat traffic. The second purchase will be upgrades to our navigational markers. We're trying to identify locations throughout town where we can identify entrances into our harbors, different inlets, try to make our navigation a little more user-friendly around town, identify rocks, better identify swim areas. The next portion will be finishing off the Bessie Park Dock Project. We obviously all see the new seawall that we're, which is, we were very fortunate to get. We added new docks to the location, aluminum gangways. We've added some solar panel LED lights to the docks. I'd like to add two more docks to that location to bring it back to its full capacity as it was prior to Hurricane Bob. We're looking into putting a kayak-launching portion on that dock at the very end so people can actually board their kayaks and slide into the water rather than risking trying to get into the kayaks from the docks. And the last portion will be to upgrade our navigate, our communications equipment, VHF radios, which is our first, our front line of communication for the boaters. This will update our portables, make them waterproof, get rid of some of the older stuff that we have, as well as upgrade our police and fire radio capabilities with the chief's new communication system. I am also going to request to add a side-scan sonar to our new patrol boat, which will help us during search and rescues. It helps us with mooring location, identifications, things of that nature. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Madam Moderator, the Board of Selectmen voted favorable action, three, four, one against.
Thank you. May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action, seven, zero, zero.
Thank you. May I have a report of capital planning?
Capital Planning Committee, this transfer of funds, this article, it has a truck included in the article, which is $40,000, which qualifies as a capital item. We voted in favor. The truck is on our capital plan. The funding is through an existing reserve account through the waterway funds, and therefore we're basically fully in favor as it basically removes some of our capital needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on the question? Seeing no one rising, I will now call for a vote on Article 11, to move to transfer $79,000 from the Harbor Service Permit Reserve for Appropriations Account to the Harbor Master Maintenance and Improvement Account. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to appro...
Can you speak clearly, right into the microphone?
I move that the town vote to appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund FY 2012, unallocated fund under the category of Historic Preservation, the sum of $163,000 for the replacement of two rubber roofs and the painting and protection of all exterior wooden services on Memorial Town Hall, such work to be completed in a manner that is consistent with standards for preservation of historic resources.
Thank you. Do I hear a second? A second. A second. To speak to the article, on my right?
Nancy Miller from Onset Community Preservation.
Nancy Miller from Onset Community Preservation. This is an article to clearly help with the exterior wooden surfaces at Town Hall as well as the replacement of two rubber roofs. And I do owe this body an apology. Maintenance initially asked that the rubber roofs be included with the earlier roofing project. It got missed when we did the RFP, and so now it's coming back for this time. But the building is a historic property. The town has agreed to a preservation restriction on it, which allows community preservation to support projects to maintain the building. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Madam Honorable, the Board of Selectmen voted favorable action, three, four, and one against.
Thank you. May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee voted favorable action, seven, zero, zero. The Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article. A recommendation by the Community Preservation Committee and an appropriation by the legislative body of the town are both required to spend any monies belonging to the fund for particular community preservation purposes under Mass General Law's Chapter forty-four B, Section seven. Repairs to the Memorial Town Hall roof will protect the building from further water damage and is an allowable expenditure under the category of historical preservation, provided the historical significance of the building has been established.
Thank you. May I have a report from capital planning?
Capital Planning Committee, this article seeks one-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand dollars from the CPA program for capital work on Town Hall. Capital Planning Committee voted in favor. The listed repairs are listed in our capital plan for this current fiscal year. The CPA program monies are allowed for the work listed in this article, and Town Hall has a pending historical preservation restriction due to prior use of CPA monies. Thank you.
Thank you. On my right?
Thank you, Brenda Ekstrom. I just have a question. The two rubber roofs, what buildings are those on? Because I thought Town Hall, I thought we had done a slate roof on this not more than a couple of years ago.
Someone to answer the question? Mr. Gifford?
Mark Gifford, Minister of Maintenance. There are two flat roofs on the Town Hall, one over the auditorium, and there's another smaller one up there besides the slate roofs.
Thank you. Anything further to be said on Article fifteen? Seeing no one standing, I will now call for a vote on Article fifteen, that the town vote to appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund FY two thousand twelve, unallocated fund under the category of historic preservation, the sum of one-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand dollars for the replacement of two rubber roofs and the painting and protection of all exterior wooden surfaces on the Memorial Town Hall, such work to be completed in a manner that is consistent with standards for preservation of historic resources. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes by a majority. Article number one. May I have a motion?
Madam Moderator, I move to authorize the treasurer with permission of the Board of Selectmen to borrow three-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand dollars to be spent as follows. Forty defibrillators, eighty-four thousand dollars. One generator, forty thousand dollars. A parking program, one parking program for seventy-five thousand dollars. And one EMS ambulance rebuild for a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to take this article by each item, line item, as we would do with the budget. I think in the essence of trying to keep things simple and understandable to everyone, we will, I will call out hold, and if you want me to hold these, and I would suspect that you want to hold all four of them, we will act on them individually by line item. Defibrillators?
Ooh.
Generator?
Ooh.
Parking program?
Ooh.
EMS ambulance?
Ooh.
Thank you. To speak to the defibrillators, the first item A.
Madam, Madam Moderator, Richard Stanley, Chief of Police. I appreciated that attempt that seemed a little overly optimistic, but I'm here to discuss defibrillators first. The defibrillators that we are trying to replace have currently been in use for over ten years. They have reached their end of useful life. We are working to increase the number of vehicles available to have units to accommodate the station and to include placing defibrillators in each police vehicle. The LifePak five hundred has been out of production for over three years, that's our current model, and support for the units will no longer be available after January two thousand and twelve. And you talk about liability issues, that's a major liability if this town doesn't have defibrillators that are up and ready. The maintaining of up-to-date defibrillators are public safety, life impact upon the citizens we serve. AEDs are essential lifesaving tools for public safety personnel. The American Heart Association, for instance, states that every minute that a person is in cardiac arrest goes without successful treatment by defibrillation, the chance of survival decreases by ten percent. Police vehicles are dispatched to medical calls within the town of Wareham and are the first to respond on scene on most occasions. The current units have taken a lot of wear over the last ten years. The manufacturer has ceased to produce the LifePak five hundred unit. The end of support will create a situation in which the existing AEDs will be, at best, expensive to maintain, if not impossible. The reliability of these units is essential in providing lifesaving measures. The project will help to avoid costly repairs and also will increase our ability to handle situations when it comes to civil and vicarious liability. This particular picture here, on October thirteenth, two thousand and eleven, at approximately two o'clock, Wareham Police Communications Personnel received a call from the state police requesting an ambulance to respond to our station for a fifty-two-year-old male operator who was having symptoms of a heart attack. Station Officer Rahagan, a trained first responder, ran outside with the defibrillator to assist the patient until EMS arrived. A recent save on September twenty-fourth, eleven, Arrowhead Drive, Wareham Police Department responded. The ambulance was tied up at the time, and we had a request, Bourne EMS. Took fourteen minutes to get Bourne EMS to the scene. And I can tell you the havoc going on in that house while, in fact, somebody was waiting for EMS to arrive from Bourne. That was an actual save by Wareham police officers. I know that there's been a lot of information out there that the Wareham Police Department doesn't use defibrillators. That's a bunch of baloney, and that's a lie, all right? We use them, we are trained to use them, and they've saved lives. In fact, I am going to have Officer Dean Deekus step forward, a nine-year veteran of the Wareham Police Department, also with the Southeast Mass Law Enforcement Council SWAT team. He's going to step forward now-
Thirty seconds.
...to give you an exact play-by-play and speak from a man whose life was saved and why defibrillators are important. And I urge people who come up with information that states what we do, do their homework for us, please. Officer Deekus?
Chief Stanley, the proponent generally has five minutes, and you've had your five minutes. Mrs. Winslow was standing, I'm going to defer to her, and then we will go to Mr. Deekus. Madam Moderator?
I'd like to have more time, Madam Operator, keep the flow going with Officer Deekus prior to the selectmen.
Are you requesting more time from the body? We have a request for additional time for the presentation from the police department. All those, how much time are you asking for?
Less than two minutes.
The police department is asking for two minutes additional. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
You have your two minutes.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Madam Moderator. Dean Deekus, Precinct Five, also Wareham police officer. On May, May thirtieth, two thousand and five, I, Officer Deekus, received a call for a forty-eight-year-old male, John Verrier, not breathing at Marion Road. John's not also, he is also a friend of mine and a friend of my family's. Upon my arrival, his, the victim's wife, Donna, was on the front steps yelling frantically that her husband was in the back room not breathing. I, along with Sergeant Jacinto and Officer Flaherty, went into the back room and found the male party on the ground, having bad color, not breathing, and no pulse. We started CPR and immediately connected the AED. The AED analyzed the patient and advised a shock should be delivered. The AED delivered the shock, and Mr. Verrier started breathing and regained a pulse. EMS arrived and began caring for the patient. Mr. Verrier was subsequently shocked again on the way to the hospital. Mr. Verrier was transported by helicopter to Boston where an internal defibrillator was implanted. Mr. Verrier is doing well at this time, thanks to the AED that was available to us at the time. He was unable to be here tonight, and he also wrote a letter that he asked if I would read for him. As a resident and veteran of this community, I am so fortunate that when my wife, Donna, called nine-one-one on May thirtieth, two thousand and five, Officer Deekus, Flaherty, and Sergeant Jacinto were on duty and equipped with the AED, that was able to keep my heart running until Wareham EMS arrived and we were able to, and they were able to get me to Toby Hospital. Later, he was brought to Brigham and Women's where they placed a pacemaker slash defibrillator in his chest. I believe this tool is just as important as handcuffs, gun, and the vehicle they need to get to calls. I have since been able to enjoy numerous occasions in my life, especially my birthday, my children graduating from high school, and my oldest graduating from college. There are many more occasions I look forward to seeing and enjoying due to the quick response of these officers and the lifesaving device. I feel that the defibrillator, defibrillators are a necessary piece of equipment due to Wareham being very large and spread out. Every taxpayer here in Wareham deserves a second chance in life. The device created that opportunity for me. I am now fifty-five years old, a survivor, a Marine, a father, and most of all, a resident of Wareham. That is what a defibrillator can do. It can help save people and help them survive. I am honored and thankful, as a survivor, to speak on behalf of those who benefited from the use of this device. Unfortunately, I'm having surgery for an unrelated problem, otherwise I would be there in person. Respectfully, I ask, consider the funds necessary for these lifesaving devices. John J. Verrier, Jr., Marion Road, Wareham, Mass.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen? No vote. May I have the vote of the Finance Committee and its recommendation?
Madam Moderator, the cost of the defibrillators is approximately two thousand dollars apiece. Typically, a replacement of lower-value equipment is a non-capital expense, but it's considered a capital item if major changes needed due to repair and maintenance considerations. The defibrillators at forty thousand dollars for forty items has been considered as capital items as they're used within the vehicles and update the onboard items that are part of the outfitting of a new cruiser. All police vehicles would be equipped with the defibrillators versus the limited number currently that are equipped. The new defibrillators are compatible with the EMS department and the fire department. As new cruisers are equipped on an annual basis, new defibrillators would be included in the outfitting of a new vehicle. The older models will not be manufacturer-supported for parts and repairs after January two thousand and twelve, but have a remaining useful life of several years. It can be used with the same effect as newer models in a first responder situation. Historically, the current equipment used by the Wareham Police Department was representative of the FINCOMs, having been used rarely. The Finance Committee voted for favorable, for favorable action, was three in favor, four against, thereby recommending the defibrillators not be procured at this time.
Thank you. May I have the report of capital planning?
On the defibrillators, we voted in favor. The problem we had was we questioned the need for forty units. We were given a list of thirty-two police vehicles, there's a certain number inside the police station, and two backups plus the two ATVs. Our discussion of this item about a year ago was talking about twenty units. Also, we have on the amendment here, on the article that says to borrow, we would rather see this come out of free cash when available. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Winslow?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Through you to the body, I'm not going to rise for every individual item, I'm going to leave my statements general here. There's no doubt that improved technology, new defibrillators, anything that can assist our departments across the community, do their jobs better, faster responses, more security for us is a good thing. However, I just want to caution the body that we're talking about borrowing money when we don't have a completed audit report from the last fiscal year. We don't know what our free cash number is going to be, and we don't have any projection out into the future. Now, I've, I've watched the Finance Committee meeting, and I understand that the bank tells us that we can borrow more money. Well, that's great. Lots of banks tell you that you can afford to do lots of things. That doesn't mean that you can or that you should. And that's what I want everybody to think about tonight. We are borrowing against an uncertain future, and that future, when it comes, can we not afford to continue to make payments, which debt service is a required payment, it's got to be made? Then we're all going to suffer further cuts in services. We talked here in the spring about borrow, using the money out of the healthcare trust fund to close a budget gap in the school. Well, that budget gap is going to exist next year.
Thirty seconds.
It's going to be larger because the cost of everything went up. So, please, I urge the body to use caution. Don't vote with emotion on these items. Vote, think them through like you would in your own household. Thank you.
On my right?
Jennifer Peterson, Precinct Five. I, too, in the interest of reverie, will not go stand up for every single one of these items, but I do want to speak to the fact that I do concur that we need, these are very essential items for the most part. However, at the October four selectmen's meeting, it was specifically stated to me that these items will not be procured until fiscal year two thousand and thirteen, which therefore does not start until July first, two thousand and twelve. So, I ask the body to look at, asking our town administrator to do the due diligence of planning for these items, put them into the two thirteen budget that will be presented in April, outline how we will pay for them, whether it's borrowed, transferred, so forth, and show us, so forth and so on, and give us transparency so that we can see what we can afford, what we cannot afford, and make informed decisions as members of the citizenry. At this time, we do not have any numbers of this statement that we received today from Powers and Sullivan. It says that in October of this month, we received over five hundred journal entries from our departments stating that these weren't even entered yet. So, fiscal year two thousand and eleven hasn't even been balanced. We're working in fiscal year two thousand and twelve right now.
Thirty seconds.
So, we need to say to ourselves, if we don't know what was spent in two thousand and eleven, we definitely don't know what's happened in two thousand and twelve. How we're going to appropriate for two thousand and thirteen, we have no information. So, I do not believe that we should do this. So, I'm going to ask the body to vote no, and it's not because I don't believe we need this, we just have no idea of how and when we'll have the money to appropriate this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mrs. Bagley?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
You have to speak, hold the mic right up.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I will rise to speak to specifically defibrillators, and I do have every intention of rising to speak to each one of these line items. These are not recreational line items. Defibrillators, I am a healthcare professional. My father died of sudden cardiac death in nineteen eighty-eight. It was before this technology was, was available everywhere. Certainly, the first responders did not have defibrillators. And as a healthcare professional, I've been a BLS instructor and have taught, I could, I would suggest that everybody in this room learn how to use an AED. You go into the airports, go into the schools- You go into the airports, go into the schools, they should definitely be absolutely everywhere. And the first responders are police officers. We call 911 because we are frantic, and we want to be absolutely certain that the defibrillator that's put on our loved one, or even on ourselves, is in good working order. Now, from working in a hospital, I was mandated to work under a Device Act. It's a federal act that I have to be certain that any piece of equipment that I use on any client or patient is in good working order, and if not, that I have the ability to make a repair on that item so that you all remain safe. And if I do not, and that particular piece of equipment does not work, shame on me. So, I'm saying to all of you, shame on all of us, if we don't have a piece of equipment that when you, or me, or any person that we witness or we love has a need for this piece of equipment, that it is going to be the best possible piece of equipment that we can provide. Thank you.
Gentleman on my right?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Bruce Savage, Precinct 1. Three out of the four of these issues are lifesaving matters. What?
Can you listen to the microphone?
Thank you. Three out of the four of these matters before us are lifesaving issues. What possible relevance is it? What our fiscal picture looked like two fiscal years ago or a fiscal year ago, that's money spent and gone. This is money that we are being asked to spend. We don't know if we have enough money. We taking $60 million a year. What do you mean we don't have enough money? We have the money. This is not going to drive our government to its knees to procure some lifesaving equipment. What are we supposed to do? What are our first responders supposed to say to the guy laying in the street? Can you hold off till next town meeting? This is ridiculous. I mean, it's, you know, political football, I love a good game, too, but this is outrageous. This has nothing to do with the real issue. The money is not the issue. The issue is, can we save people's lives, and do we have a responsibility to do so? And will this town be sued when we show up with faulty equipment? What is a family going to say? Geez, I'll skip the lawsuit? That's not going to happen. So, you know, I agree with one statement previously said, use your head and don't think emotionally, think logically, and do the right thing.
Thank you. Gentleman on my right?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Mike Flaherty, again. Through you to the Capital Planning Committee, I'd like to know if all of Article 1 has gone through the capital planning process. Thank you.
To answer the question?
To clarify, I heard this earlier today that this was submitted after the warrant closed, so I'd like to know if this article has completely been vetted through the capital planning process. Thank you.
To answer Mr. Flaherty's question?
Item number three, no.
Thank you.
Is this all of Article 1?
We have before us just the line item on defibrillators, and that's all we're speaking to Mr. Flaherty at the moment.
Okay, I don't want to come up here each time, though. Could we just get, is it appropriate?
No, I want to take them, to avoid confusing and going back and forth, I think it simplifies the matter if we take them one by one.
Okay. Through you to the Town Administrator, is it true that these items will not be procured until FY 2013?
To answer the question, if you chooses.
Through to the gentleman, that statement was made with respect to the planning processes that we went through for the capital improvements that you have before you. As you can see, we do have room to borrow here for the amount that's listed for $349,000 that includes the defibrillators. That's been certified by the treasurer-collector, and so I made that statement with respect to defibrillators we talked about in the last budget session. We didn't get them in the budget at that time. It's time that we look at getting the new defibrillators because of some of the dire need at this particular juncture, as well as the product line going out of its warranty period, so, or support period. So, when that was brought to my attention by the police chief, I did insert it. We did talk about it at Capital Planning Committee, and I'm happy to listen to this body as it pertains to their feelings on this matter. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, will they be procured in FY 12 or FY 13?
We're going to get this in this fiscal year, in fiscal 2012.
In fiscal 2012, thank you. Madam Moderator, I'm going to read a message I have received from the Town Administrator when I had questions regarding the capital planning, Article 1. Mr. Flaherty, for the record, I have stressed the fact that the capital planning, that the capital plan I submitted as Article 1 will be included in my FY 2013 capital spending plan. There is no impact to FY 2012. I have identified the revenue from the meals lodging tax as the source of funding in FY 2013. As for the articles, the explanation of funding, the harbor master, it's relevant because I'm hearing one thing.
Just a minute, Mr. Flaherty. I believe Mr. Flaherty is making a statement based on information he has, and it is relevant. You're out of line, Mr. Donahue. I have ruled, go ahead, Mr. Flaherty.
Thank you. To continue, yes, it was supposed to be used by the meals and lodging tax as the source of funding in FY 2013. As for the other articles, the explanation of funding, e.g. the harbor master, has already been approved, so I am not sure about your question, perhaps a misunderstanding, as you could talk with Chairman Heath, et cetera. But, to be clear, I mean, I was told that this would be handled in FY 2013, and that's not, that's not apparently the case. And I agree, I agree that these items are lifesaving, but I was led to believe that we didn't need them until next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Andrews, do you wish to?
Madam Moderator, through you to the gentleman, we found a funding source in this fiscal year. This is a life safety, public safety issue. It was continued in the presentation that we brought to the annual budget meeting in April. It was up on the screen to talk about and to get to these items. The only item that we found that was different, I'm going to leave this off and just leave you with this, is a generator that we found that was deficient through planning and preparation for tropical storm Irene. So, I did indicate that if, in fact, there were no other funding sources in this fiscal year, given the dire need that we have on this matter and how I feel about it, then I would put it in my fiscal 2013 spending plan. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. Mrs. Bronk? Before you step, Mrs. Bronk, I just had a request. If we have a janitor available or if someone related within the school department, we're having some complaints that people are chilly. If there's some way we could address that? Actually, I'm hearing we're freezing. Mrs. Bronk?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The Finance Committee looked at all these items, and we looked at them very carefully, and we did do our homework, many of us did, and I specifically asked 11 police officers, just, have you ever used a defibrillator? And I, from 11, I talked to more, but from 11, they'd never even used one, but they've been trained to use one. Do I think they're important? Absolutely, they're important. But ladies and gentlemen, we don't have 40 defunct defibrillators. They work. What we wanted to see is, we wanted to see, as they get their new cruisers, outfit them, you know, outfit them with the new defibrillators. Nobody wants to see anybody at risk and not have the right equipment. Ladies and gentlemen, we have it. And as former speaker says, we don't know how much money we have. I'm on the Finance Committee, and I haven't seen, I haven't seen a clean picture in two years of how much money we have. We don't know what we have. We have to wait and see what we have, and we shouldn't be committing money unless it's a life and safety. And ladies and gentlemen, this is not a life and safety. This is what's being told to you, but we do have working defibrillators.
Thank you. Chief Stanley, I see you standing there, but at the beginning of this meeting, this body took a vote to allow the proponent five minutes, and then they extended you the courtesy to allow an additional seven minutes, so you have used your time.
This is extremely important.
I understand that, but this body took a vote. This body, and this is historically, I realize that you have just come to town, and historically...
I'm requesting, I'm requesting a couple of minutes to, to talk about exactly what she just said.
Unfortunately, Chief Stanley, you have used your time. Let's get to the other speakers. On my left?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Caleb Burrows, Precinct 5. I have, I've been listening to the opposition argue about whether or not we have the appropriate funds, but I'd like to ask the body to think on a personal level, the people that could be saved by these defibrillators, they could be your wives, your husbands, your children. I would like to keep this short and sweet and just finish off. Ask yourself, how much is a life worth? Thank you, and I urge you to vote in favor.
Thank you. On my right?
Christine Percivich, Precinct 1. May I give my time to the chief, Stanley?
No, we don't transfer a time, Mrs. Percivich. That defeats the purpose of voting in time limits.
All right. As a person that's had AFib four times this year and a cardiac version once, and the previous speaker did say that the first responders are the police department, I would like to see this, and I urge you to vote yes.
On my left?
Nicole Di Pasquale, Precinct 6. I just have a question about the current defibrillators that we have. I know former speaker spoke about it briefly, but are they, is the majority of them not working? Are they, I mean, I understand that they're, the replacement parts will expire in 2012, January, but are the ones that we have not working, is this an immediate issue that can't wait till April town meeting? If, I mean, if they're not working now, then clearly we have an issue, but if they are working, then this is something that can hold on till April. If anybody can answer that, so I can have a clear understanding?
To answer the question?
I didn't hear a question, because I was still trying to prepare to negate exactly what was said earlier. We're talking about life safety issues, so please ask me that question again, I'm sorry.
Would you repeat your question, Mrs. Di Pasquale?
Chief, my question was, with the defibrillators that we have now, we're talking about life savings, the defibrillators that we have now, are they defunct? Are they not working? Are they immediate going to stop working?
They are, they are currently working, but the problem is that when they leak, when they reach that life expectancy, they are not dependable. We are warned by manufacturers, similarly to bulletproof vests. At the end of five years, we have to change bulletproof vests. Are they still good? They may work, but the widow will sue, and the person wearing it may get shot and it goes through, and just like the defibrillators, it may not work. So, there's a civil and vicarious liability issues, and so forth. They're not dependable after a certain period of time.
The replacement parts are supposed to be nonexistent. Do we have replacement parts for them on stock?
No. That's something, no, you don't carry that. You send it back to the manufacturer, and they're not, they're not using them where they're, they're too old.
Okay, that's my question. Thank you.
Okay. On my right?
Jeff Swett from East Road. Removed from this motion, if you look at the actual article in your warrant, are seven school buses. At the beginning of last week, I went to the Transportation Department to celebrate with them National School Bus Safety Week. In my conversation with the mechanics, they said essentially verbatim what the chief said about the defibrillators. The buses are now so old, the spare parts are unavailable, and when they are available, they're extraordinarily expensive. I need to remind people that there are school buses that have been removed, they are critical to the transportation of our children. I'm not arguing against this article, I'm arguing for the inclusion of school buses when they become available. It is almost impossible to amend this article, this motion, because the lease of school buses is...
We have a point. Please state your point. I agree with Mr. Camerata's point, Mr. Swett. Please stick to the subject of defibrillators.
Thank you for your time.
On my left?
Dan Bezenette, Precinct 4. Madam Moderator, through you to the Town Administrator, could I please get clarification? If the funding is available in FY 12, why are we asking to borrow $349,000?
To answer the question?
Because the funding is available through the borrowing process. It's within the ceiling that we have set.
Ladies and gentlemen, please. Ladies and gentlemen?
So, basically, we're able to borrow the money in FY 12 instead of having to borrow in FY 13? Is that a correct statement?
We have, we have a debt service limit that is in this budget that can include the one-time purchases that are listed in the motion. The lease items, just to be clear to a gentle person earlier, the lease items were prepared to go forward if, in fact, we had other available funding sources. So, just for the further edification, real quickly, there's a House bill on the governor's desk as we speak, House 3737, that restores $121,000 in local aid to the town of Wareham and other municipalities across the state to the tune of $65 million. We've been tracking that. If the governor had signed that bill by town meeting this evening, I would have included it in the motion. It's the available funding source that I found to get this item covered as quickly as we needed it for the chief's department. Is that clear?
It sounds as if you're saying that we have an opportunity to borrow the money in FY 12 because of our ceiling, instead of having to postpone that to FY 13. So, we didn't actually find the funds, we just found the room to borrow the money?
That's correct.
Correct.
Thank you.
On my right? Ladies and gentlemen, decorum and respect, please. On my right?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Brenda Exstrom. I would urge favorable action on this. While I can appreciate the concern of some people saying, well, we have them right now, or, well, you know, they should be fine to work, I would hate to be the spouse, or the victim, or the parent, or the child of someone when one of our officers rush into the house and put the system on, only to find out at that point that it doesn't work. And I believe that the chief brought up a very good point insofar as the liability, and I believe that one of the selectmen also brought it up, is the liability that we are standing here, we know that these are going to not be able to be replaced, that we will not be able to have replacement parts, and yet we're deciding that it's not in our best interests, or that it's in our best interest financially to take the chance with someone's life. I would hate to be the defendant in that lawsuit, so I urge favorable action.
Thank you. At this time, I am going to ask our town treasurer to speak to the issue of borrowing, which I think will help clarify some of the questions. Mr. Foster?
John Foster, Treasurer Collector, and I think the question might be that when you borrow these articles, or when you borrow, if you were to borrow for the defibrillators, the generator parking program, if it were borrowed during this fiscal year in January, the first debt payment would come due in fiscal 2013. So, you would borrow it in this year, our first payment would be in the next fiscal year. I think that's where the confusion might be.
Thank you. Gentleman on my right?
Thomas Vicki, Precinct 3. Coming from a family that has heart disease and had several family members die from sudden cardiac arrest, I'm, you know, sensitive to the issue. The concern that I have is, is that buying 40 defibrillators at one time means eight or 10 years down the road, all of these defibrillators are going to have to be replaced again. I'd like to see a tiered approach where we buy, say, 10 defibrillators this year, 10 the next year, 10 the next year, so that eight, or 10, or 12 years down the road, we're not faced with exactly the same situation that we're going to be faced with in another year or so, that all the defibrillators are going to have to be replaced. I'd like the chief to come back at the April town meeting with a tiered approach to buying these things, and I agree with the previous speaker that said, let's equip all the... and I agree with the previous speaker that said, "Let's equip all the new police cars that we get with current state-of-the-art defibrillators." And more so to that point, if we, if we increase the purchase over a longer period of time, we can get better state-of-the-art equipment, so that in the future, we, we can send out the first responders with the best technology that's available. So I ask you to defeat this motion, but then to support it in April with a tiered approach. Thank you.
On my left?
Steve Curry, Precinct 5. Uh, one question first, Madam Moderator. How many current police vehicles do we have that are on the road in service, not counting ATVs or transport vans or anything like that? Cruisers is basically the question.
To answer the question?
There are 32 vehicles, marked and unmarked. Two undercover vehicles, two at the station, two for rotation and spare, and two for the ATVs. Remember, in addition to all of these things going on, there are a lot of events that take place that we could have, that we could have defibrillators present. And the reason why a tiered approach will not work is because training is consistent with muscle memory, and in a crisis situation, whether it's the use of force, or the use of a defibrillator, or first responder training, or anything along that line, you go in a crisis directly with muscle memory. A tiered approach wouldn't work, because Officer X could be used to using one particular unit-
Just a minute. Uh, Chief Stanley, we have a point of order.
Creates confusion and death.
Chief Stanley, we have a point. Thank you.
Please, uh, reading with questions?
Thank you. On my left?
Uh, yes, Madam Moderator. So basically, we need 30 defibrillators instead of 40. Um, I know I've spoken with some of the, the people that work in EMS, and one of the defibrillators that we have now are still in very good working order, so I think a replacement program, like a previous speaker said, would be a better option. Also, um, in large Staples Town Meeting, we fully funded the police department. I know in part of their budget, there must be some money set aside for reserves, repairs, and replacement of equipment. Also at the April Town Meeting, um, it was voted in an additional $128,000 from the meals tax that was added above and beyond the police budget. Perhaps the police department could look at the $128,000 and replace some of the equipment that's being looked for. The 84 for the fibrillators and 40 for the generators, uh, for the extra $128,000 they received last April, would pretty much cover that expense without the town having to borrow money and going to further debt. And right now, with the, like a previous speaker said, with the, the two audits going on, we're not sure if the tax rate will be set come December, because the audit will not be done till December, as per regularity by, uh, the Department of Revenue.
30 seconds.
So, if, if my math is right, and the numbers were still good from April, uh, I think the police department has the extra $128,000 that we gave them from the meals tax that they could purchase us out of their, their cash and budget than having us borrow more money. Thank you.
Thank you. On my right?
Yes, thank you, Sandy Slaven, Precinct 3. I will try louder. Precinct 3, Sandy Slaven. The question on the previous speaker was how many vehicles we had. My question is, at any particular, um, what do you want to call it, period of time, how many are on the road? If, shift, that's the word I want. In a shift, how many police vehicles are on the road?
To answer the question?
Day shift between the investigators and the administrative personnel and the patrol units, it could be up to 12 units on the road.
Thank you.
So that's 12 units, of which not all are immediate responders. Um, the question I have, is there $2,100 a unit? Why not pay for a couple, maybe four or five, out of their expense budget and have half the vehicles covered with this subdefibrillators? 40 seems to me an awful high lot of, high number, where some of them will never be on the road at any one time. To me, it should be shared, going from vehicle to vehicle, from shift to shift, as opposed to having 40 at one time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Burrows, you're standing, but I believe you have already spoken and used your two minutes?
No, I have not. I, I have not spoken to this. You're, you're mistaking me, I think, for that young and handsome Burrows right there.
I'm sorry, I apologize. On my left?
Um, I, I think one of the reasons why a tiered approach may not work, although it's a great idea, um, is if we've got so many units that, within so many months, um, the manufacturer says these units are no longer, we can't consider these normally functioning units, and we can't even guarantee you they're going to function, um, you know, I think that that kind of puts a little urgency on the purchase. But I wanted to make two points. One is, um, for several years, I served, um, on an ambulance in the Boston area, covering many towns. Um, and we had a previous healthcare provider speak, so I, I don't think I need to explain to you the importance from that standpoint, why, um, I think this is an important investment. The other point I wanted to make is that, um, there's some areas in town, especially out near the Rochester end of town, where it's going to take, um, any emergency vehicle from downtown, a response time of six to 10 minutes. Well, if you're somebody who's laying on the floor, who's just had a heart attack and you're not breathing, folks, you've got about five, and after that, your brain cells, um, die, and they actually begin to die earlier than that, but that's your dysfunctional brain cells, where you'll never be the same again. Um, so anyway, um, I'm sorry that there's some people around me who can't appreciate that. Um, and I'm, I'm speaking to all the comments while I'm, I'm trying to sort my thoughts and speak.
Ladies and gentlemen, I really hate to keep reminding you, please keep the chatter down while a speaker is speaking. It's very rude and inconsiderate.
Thank you. And my last point is that, um, with a, a town population of over 20,000, this comes out to a $4 investment per person for the next eight to 10 years, and we're covered. Thank you.
Thank you. On my left?
Good evening, Madam Moderator. Through you to the body.
I, on my left, I'm sorry, they were ahead of you. I'm sorry. On my left?
Oh, anyways, I got confused, because I thought she was next. Um, I just want to go back generally to a point that was made a few speakers ago, not specifically to defibrillators, but generally to the, to the point of borrowing money now, when our fiscal house just is not in order. Um, to my way of thinking, it's irresponsible. I understand what everyone is saying about saving lives and all that. Ideally, we'd have defibrillators on, in every house, or readily available, but I think we really, really, really need to get our fiscal house in order before we go borrowing money, spending money, paying money on July 1st, or paying money now, whatever. The other point is that, really what we're doing here today, if we vote on this today, we're voting on something that's going to impact subsequent fiscal years, starting with FY 2013, without having before us and without considering what other vital needs the town has. And I think it all needs to be considered at the same time.
On my right?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. My apologies. I'd just like to speak to two points. First, I'd like to speak-
Please identify, please, please identify.
I'd like to speak to the overall budget situation.
Please state your name, thank you.
Jane Donahue, Precinct 3. Like to speak to the overall budget. At, at Spring Town Meeting, we were advised not to spend our $1.5 million of free cash. My educated guess is that $1.5 million that we didn't spend in April is going to roll forward when we get the auditor's report, because we didn't spend it, and it had nothing to do with the other issues that we have. The fact that we have debt ceiling available to us to borrow this money is another point that I'd like to bring up. What that means is that we are not, we're not broke, we're not maxed out. Our, okay, you can say it's our credit card situation is not maxed out. That's the case, but there is available resources within this fiscal year to be able to make this purchase. So I think that, yes, we do have further steps to be taken to get things in order, and yes, that there are some, some, you know, valid issues to be determined as far as our overall budget goes, but they don't come into play necessarily in this particular scenario, where we could go forward, borrow the money, have the defibrillators on hand. Um, I, I've heard a lot of talk about taking a tiered approach, and I'd like to ask the, the Chief, um, in a ti-, is, is the tiered approach have something to do with compatibility? Because I know that there are some pieces of equipment that you need to buy that need to be compatible, and so you need to replace them all at once. You can't really take a tiered approach. So if it's, if it's also a matter of training somebody on one piece of equipment, and then they're in a car with a different piece of equipment, and they're, you know, they're trying to figure out where they are with, with the equipment and how to use it, I mean, great to have equipment, but if you have two different kinds, are you using the right equipment in the right time? And what if you're, you're the guy on the ground, and your police officer is trying to do the best that he can?
30 seconds.
So I'd like to ask the Chief if he could respond to those questions, please.
To answer the questions?
Training is based on muscle memory and repetitive process. If, in fact, you have multiple units in a vehicle, officers in crisis will get confused. That's proven. And there are, there is case law for cases like that, where equipment isn't kept consistent. So we're in a position that the moral obligation we have is to provide the best service to these people who are down, but also there's legal issues as well. Proper equipment, proper training, muscle memory, same thing as we stated. We all carry the same weapons. We all carry the same, we wear the same vests. We use the same defibrillators. Everything is done the same, the same radios. It's all done for a reason.
Thank you. On my left?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Bill Heaney, Precinct 1. Ladies and gentlemen, this, this, although we're talking about defibrillators, this is not a conversation about any of these, uh, items that we're looking at on the screen. This is actually a testament to how badly the town's finances are in today's environment. When you think that we have $60 million, previous speaker said we have $60 million coming into the town, um, but at the April Town Meeting, we took a million and a half dollars from the Health Trust Fund to balance the budget. We were broke six months ago. Today, we're saying we should borrow $349,000, technically on our credit card. All this is saying is that we've got, we haven't reached the limit, the borrowing limit, on our credit card yet, and we still have $349,000 at least, uh, to go on that credit limit. Is it a wise thing to, to do, to keep eating at your credit limit all the time, given that six months from now, we're going to have to sit and wrestle with a million and a half dollar problem, because we don't have the Health Trust Fund to go to again? I can't argue against defibrillators. I don't know if we need a generator or a parking program. I'd much prefer to see a new ambulance than a rebuilt ambulance, in case I happen to have to ride in the thing.
30 seconds.
But, but realistically, these are the choices that we're going to have to make as a body over the upcoming years. They're hard choices, it's a hard discussion, it's not over tonight, it's not over with defibrillators. Um, but get used to it, because this is where we're going for the next several years.
Thank you. Selectman Holmes?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Through you to the members. Um, being in healthcare 35 years, being a patient in our great Wareham system since last May, three, four trips to the hospital. Listen, defibrillators are important, okay? But here's the problem I have. Former Selectman got up and, and nailed it right on the head. We have a budget of $60 million, and we can't afford $84,000 for defibrillators. This isn't about defibrillators, it's about fiscal responsibility and management. And since I've been sitting here and watching this, uh, process, we have zero fiscal responsibility and management. The money that we've spent in the last year to pay auditors, um, people who are fired, rehired, sitting home, getting paid, could have probably funded all of these items.
Ladies and gentlemen?
Please don't applaud, it's done. Listen, that, you know, well, you know what? It's not funny. It's a serious matter, because now you have a Chief of Police over here who's come to us looking for 40 defibrillators that save lives. Any one of us here, I've been in the back of the wagon, I know what it feels like. And this is ridiculous that we have to come here and do this. But, to borrow all this money, now we've heard tonight, "I found a funding source. In fiscal year 12, I'm going to pay for this, because it's public safety." Bull. You just heard the Treasurer Collector get up and say, "We can borrow it now, you're going to pay for it next year." We're already at least a million and a half in debt next year, because we don't have the Healthcare Trust Fund to raid. I warned you that, Ben.
Time-
Time's up. Can, can I ask for another minute?
You certainly may. Uh, Mr. Selectman Holmes has asked for, uh, an additional minute. All those in favor of allowing an additional minute, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, you have your minute.
I appreciate it. I'll try to talk much faster. Um, so, basically, what we're saying is, um, we've been paying people, they're not on the job. This equipment, by the way, and there's another former management, Chief, with all due respect, being a materials manager for 35 years, this stuff doesn't go outdated all at once. I think we had this before us in April, so this stuff has been sitting, waiting to go outdated for almost a year now, correct, Chief? Through you, Madam Moderator, to the Chief.
To answer the question, should he choose to?
The question is, it didn't start going outdated three weeks ago. This, this stuff has been on the outdate list for over a year, correct? Through you.
Please come to the microphone to answer the question. Thank you.
Yeah, hurry up, Chief, you used up my minute.
I did, in fact, uh, request these probably in February of 2011.
So it's over here. Thank you. Um, so folks, we got a problem here, but, um, we can't, you know, defibrillators are not an issue. At $2,100 bucks a pop, it is kind of a game to put this stuff under capital, because you could probably buy a few a month between now and then. We have a $60 million budget, and we can't afford this. There is no funding source available to pay for this, other than borrowing, which is going to come out of fiscal year 13. We just heard the tax clerk to tell us that. So look, I, I don't support a lot of these things, but when it comes to defibrillators, we have to take action. Uh, but the rest of it, I would put a freeze on it, uh, but we're only talking about defibrillators right now. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have spent probably 45 minutes on this. I am going to take the last three people standing, and then I'm going to call for a vote on the motion. I think that we have had a very balanced discussion, both pro and con, um, and in order to move the meeting along, I will take these last three people who are standing on my right.
Eddie Percivich, Precinct 1. Uh, I agree with Selectman Holmes. Um, we can't wait. It depends which one of us. You're going to take a chance, who's going to be laying on the ground, who needs a defibrillator, and it doesn't work. They're over a year outdated. We have to get them now. The sooner the better. Does anybody want to see one of their loved ones laying on the floor, and happen to hit them with a defibrillator, and it doesn't work? You going to take that chance? I'm not ready to take that chance. And I'll tell you one other thing, we're paying the Chief good money, and in my opinion, he's doing a heck of a job. Let's stay with him, let's support him.
Ladies and gentlemen? Ladies and gentlemen?
He's the manager in charge, he's telling us how many we need and why we need them. Is there anybody else in here that can argue with him? I don't think so. Thank you.
On my right?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. John Donahue, Precinct 3. Ladies and gentlemen, I ask you to turn to page 11 of your warrant, please, and I'll be as brief as possible. Article 11. "We voted, about an hour ago, to purchase a diesel, four-wheel-drive, one-ton pickup truck, additional navigational aids and hardware, anchors, chains, shackles, VH and UHF radio communication equipment, to enhance inoperability, side scans, sonar, to assist in searches and rescues, and to add two additional floating docks, et cetera."
Ladies and gentlemen?
Now, we didn't borrow for that, but we transferred money, and we passed that article unanimously. There was no discussion whatsoever about our budget and getting our fiscal house in order. Why didn't we have that discussion then?
Why didn't we have that discussion then? Why weren't we asking ourselves, "Well, there's $79,000 we can save, we can put aside, we don't have to spend, until we get our fiscal house in order," but we passed it unanimously? Now we're talking about defibrillators that will save people's lives, and we're having this debate. I urge you to support this article.
Thank you. Mr. Schneider. Ladies and gentlemen, please, once again, we did really well up until this article. I would like you to go back to where you started at the beginning, and ask yourselves, can you be a little more considerate? Selectman Schneider.
Madam Moderator, through you to the body. We have a debt ceiling limit for a purpose. This is not the first time that this body has voted to finance such important items, and this is part of the normal budgeting process, in my view. I have, when we, when we were asked to vote on this article initially, we had a number of other items included, including school buses. Those items were partially factored into the 2012 budget, as well as being financed out going into the 2013 budget and beyond. Is that correct, Mr. Town Administrator?
Through the moderator, to answer the question, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. You are correct, Mr. Schneider.
Thank you.
So as being part of the normal budgeting process, to utilize the debt service limit, we are talking about significant, it was pointed out before, three of the items are public safety items. And I can know, I can only speak to the defibrillators at this point, but I urge you to support this, this article. I'm aware of the situation where the gentleman was revived almost on the, on the stairs of the police station recently, and we can't have our officers being expected to take one defibrillator and move it into another cruiser, because we only have twelve updated defibrillators? Come on, folks. We absolutely need to do this. It's for, it's for public safety.
Thirty seconds.
And, you know, how many, how many lives are we going to risk by not doing this? And how can we ask our officers, how many of those twelve that we're going to purchase might get damaged if, if we're moving them from cruiser to cruiser? I ask you to support this, this article.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this borrowing motion requires a two-thirds vote. So the motion that will come before you will be for favorable action on the, on forty defibrillators for a total of $84,000. The only way that I could call a two-thirds vote was if it was unanimous. I will try for unanimous, and if not, we will be, we will need to take a required hand count. All those in favor of borrowing $84,000 for the purchase of forty defibrillators, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
This will require a count. Tellers, please come forward. All those in favor, please hold your cards high until the tellers tell you that they have counted your row. Ladies and gentlemen, we are approaching the hour of 10 o'clock. After this vote, it might be of interest to someone that might want to continue the meeting till tomorrow evening to take up the remainder of Article One, should you so choose.
Section one sixteen, one-six.
Section one sixteen. Section two.
Twenty-two.
Section two twenty-two. Section three.
Thirty-eight.
Section three thirty-eight. Section four.
Twenty-three, two-three.
Twenty-three, two-three. All those opposed, please hold your cards up high. Section one nineteen. Section two.
Sixteen.
Section two sixteen. Section three. Section three sixty-two. Section four.
Twenty-five, two-five.
The motion fails.
Madam Moderator, point of order.
State your point.
Jane Donahue. There was no motion on the floor to divide this question. I do not see the validity of a vote on a portion of the motion.
The moderator, Mrs. Donahue, the moderator has the privilege of regulating the meeting in, in the essence of making sure that the meeting runs smoothly and that the vote is clear. The moderator has the prerogative to take it line item by line item. Your motion is, your point is out of order.
Madam Moderator, if I could...
Mrs. Donahue, I have ruled.
People understood that we could talk about one item at a time, not that we were going to...
Mrs. Donahue, I have ruled, your point is not valid. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Barrows, state your point.
How much did you say? Was that 122?
Yes.
It's 112. Add it up. Nineteen, sixteen, fifty-two, twenty-five.
Sixty-two.
Hold it.
Thank you. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we are approaching the hour of 10 o'clock, and under our rules, we need to not go unless someone makes a motion to go before the hour of 10. What's your pleasure? We need a motion to adjourn to a time certain and date. Would someone like to make a motion that we adjourn until tomorrow evening at seven o'clock?
Motion to adjourn until tomorrow evening.
At seven o'clock?
Second.
Seven o'clock.
Thank you. We have a motion before us to adjourn and resume tomorrow night at seven o'clock. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. We'll see you tomorrow night.